Alright, so everybody else will get an indicator just like that when they log in. And we're up to about 11 attendees going dark.
Thanks Drew. We've got about five minutes. We're gonna start right at six o'clock.
Wait, did you see that message we sent? Or I sent?
Just right now.
On your phone?
Yeah, when they're coming up, it might be a good idea. Oh, thank you Drew. I appreciate that as well. Yeah, you know, when they're coming up, it might be a good idea to if questions come up during the presentation because I'm not gonna have my question and answer part going. If there's questions that are coming up during the presentation. Maybe if you can find a way to organize those or or see what. See if some of them kind of run together a little bit. But we can, I mean, we'll have a little bit of time afterwards as well because like I said, we're gonna try and hit some of those questions that. That were that were sent in first. But a lot of those will be answered during the presentation as well soon. Get going in about three minutes here. Thank you. Get going in about two minutes. Eleven and a half maybe. Starting to get some people logging on. Welcome. Thanks for coming. Hope everybody's having a good day. We get this thing going in about one minute. Get people to get an opportunity to log on here. Okay, it is six o'clock. I see we've got. Fair number of attendees at this point right now. I do want to be punctual and get this thing started and going on time. We're gonna run this for at most an hour depending on how long it takes us to get through questions, but first of all, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. This is going to be the first of. Hopefully several few depending on how quickly the school year starts for us. Parent meetings, information meetings that we're gonna be running over the next several weeks to begin our school year. Let me say that I sincerely hope that this is the most unique start to a school year that any of us ever had a chance to go through. That said, we're in this one together. We're gonna make a great learning opportunity for our kids here at Silverton High School in the 2020-21 school year. Some of what you're gonna hear tonight is going to echo what was heard at the district town hall. So if you were at that, there's gonna be a little bit of. Of a repeat of some of that information. However, the newest guidance from ODE and the state came out yesterday. So we are still learning more every day and there are still adjustments that are being made every day. Some of the latest adjustments even for us came out just this afternoon and that'll be reflected in the in the presentation that you're gonna hear tonight. I think it's important to keep in mind that there are still at this point more unknowns than there are knowns as far as our process moving forward. What the school year is is going to look like. Every solution that we find or every solution that we come to is tending to create several new challenges and so we're finding. Creative ways to solve those challenges and address those challenges, but. But but I think it is important to keep in mind as we go through this process, there really are still more unknowns than there are knowns. What we're gonna do tonight is give you an overview. I present what the what the year is gonna look like and then we're gonna answer some questions from you. There were about 21 questions that were sent in prior to this, so we've got those compiled. Some of those questions are gonna be answered. As we go through this presentation, some of them will not be, and so we're gonna answer them at the end here. We'll do the best that we can to answer them. What we can't answer, we will put into an FAQ document. Get that posted and sent out so everybody has an opportunity. That is to say, what we can't answer, we will. Seek some some responses. Talk to district office, confer with one another, and we'll get some responses out in FAQ document as quickly as we possibly can. Please also keep in mind that everything that that you've seen tonight. One is. Is the product of a lot of work that's been put together, a lot of time that's been spent trying to problem solve and and give our students the best opportunity for. For learning, the most comfortable learning environment that we can possibly create for them in a difficult situation. It is created to be flexible in a distance learning environment. All of this is subject to change based on state guidance. And what is or what is not working as we go through this process, we have to recognize that there's gonna be a lot of trial and errors. We go through this process. And we need to be willing to and able to kind of pivot a little bit when necessary or when we need to in order to serve our students and our families as best we possibly can. Finally, I think it's really important to keep in mind that that there's a reason that we all choose a brick and mortar school for our kids. It's best for students learning. It is best for families. And we will get back there. We want that as well. Our teachers want that as well. Everybody wants to get back into into school and be able to enjoy, you know, a normal school year. However, in a crisis situation, we're forced into a different model and we're gonna do our best to deliver an outstanding experience for our students and for our families in this model. And I think it's great to keep in mind also that this is an outstanding opportunity to teach our kids about adapting and overcoming adversity. So with that. I'm gonna give you what it's gonna look like at Silverton High School as far as the plan that we put together at this point or up to this point for the 2021 school year. Perhaps. First of all, I'm gonna give you a little bit of an overview of what we're gonna do. The Silverfall School District Plan, which is the Fox Hybrid versus the Fox Online and how that's applied to Silverton High School. We're gonna talk a little bit about the state metrics to return to in-person learning and what that looks like. We're gonna talk about what it looks like when it's safe to return. We're gonna go through the hybrid schedule when we are. Back in school and what it looks like when our students are in school on the hybrid schedule. We're gonna address how our students are going to earn credits, what it has looked like traditionally and what it will look like in in the 2021 school year. We have a draft of a bell schedule that we put out there so we can see what it will look like in the hybrid model. And then again, at the very end, we're we're gonna take questions from everybody. So. Without further ado, kind of what it looks like here. First, first of all, the state metrics to return to in-person learning. So for those that haven't been able to see what those metrics look like. In order for us to be able to return to in-school learning or even the hybrid model, the state has to be at or below a 5% positive test rate over a seven-day period of time. Both counties that the Silverfall School District serves, which is Clackamas and Marion County, have to be at or below a 5% test rate over a seven-day period of time. And then both counties that the Silverfall School District serves have to be at or below 10 cases per 100,000 residents over a seven-day period of of time for three consecutive weeks. So what that would actually look like is that in both Marion and Clackamas Counties. You would be looking at roughly 35 or fewer cases over a three consecutive week period of time before we would be able to reopen. Thirty-five cases per week over three consecutive weeks. So. Just so you get an idea of what those metrics look like, they're laid out by the state and and this, these are metrics that we as a county. And as a school district have to be able to, as a state, I suppose, have to be able to hit in order to be able to transition to our hybrid model that that you're gonna see here in just a moment. The Silverfall School District Plan, Fox Hybrid versus Fox Online. In the Fox Hybrid model. Regardless of what happens, we know right now we are going to be spending the first nine weeks of our school year, and that's been a commitment by the district already. The first nine weeks of our school year is going to be in a distance learning model. By Sunday of last week, the district was asking for folks that wanted to enroll their students in Fox Online to have that request by August 9th, by Sunday, August 9th. So hopefully, we've got those numbers in by now. If you haven't gotten it in, please feel free to send us a request. The sooner the better because we need to know kind of for staffing purposes, how many how many students we're gonna be looking at to be serving online. When we talk about the Fox Hybrid versus the Fox Online class. If you chose or if you are in the hybrid, you will still begin your entire year or you will still begin the school year at least for the nine weeks online. And it will reflect very similarly the Fox, the Fox Online program. If you choose Fox Online, your entire year will be online. The the real value of the Fox Online program is knowing from the outset, knowing from the beginning, exactly what your program is gonna look like through the entire year, and that is going to be an online curriculum. Fox Hybrid, even in the distance learning for the first nine weeks, will be an Edge Annuity curriculum, which is. An online curriculum that the the district has invested in for the 2021 school year. It will be an Edge Annuity curriculum plus supplemented by Silverton High School teachers' curriculums as well. Edge Annuity is gonna be the baseline kind of curriculum that all of our teachers are gonna use throughout the school year. That will give our students in both Fox Online and Hybrid a very consistent predictable curriculum that they will follow. If you are in the Fox Hybrid, that will also be supplemented by some some Silverton High School teachers' curriculum as well. Fox Online will be very specific to the Edge Annuity curriculum. The Fox Hybrid classes and the Fox Online classes, as you can see, will both be taught by Silverton High School teachers. One will just be more closely following the the curriculum laid out by Edge Annuity. Whereas the Fox Hybrid, again, it'll be an Edge Annuity plus some supplements laid in there by the SHS, by SHS teachers. Fox Hybrid will have, Fox Hybrid students will have full access to Silverton High School electives. At this point right now, we do not anticipate in our hybrid model eliminating or compromising any of our electives that we offer or that we currently offer at this point right now. When it comes to Fox Online, those electives are gonna be a little bit more limited access. In fact. Perhaps significantly more limited access based on how many teachers were able to commit to an online curriculum for the year. So though some of that access might exist within the Edge Annuity curriculum, we still only have so many teachers that are gonna be committed to teaching that curriculum, so it's gonna be a very limited number of electives. That we're gonna be allowed to offer. It's gonna be more of a focus on our core subjects for Fox Online. Both our Fox Hybrid and Fox Online are gonna have access to social emotional learning that will be done online, again guided by. By an SHS teacher. Both of both of these paths will have full access to extracurricular activities. I think it is important to keep in mind that the Fox Online students are still Silverton High School students. So when we have an opportunity to get our speech and debate program going, have an opportunity to get our swim program going, our soccer program going, what have you, when those opportunities do exist, again, we have to hit the state metric. Any of our students that choose Fox Online will have full access to those extracurricular activities. Both will have access to support services, whether they're tag services. Whether they are. Special ed programs, regardless of what they are, you will have access to all of our support services. Fox Online will also have a learning coach to monitor progress. In many cases, this will be a parent and it's gonna kind of be the guide or the learning coach for the parent. But those will also be individually, individual conversations to figure out who's gonna be able to monitor the progress for those students. And and keep in touch with the teacher to make sure the student is making. Adequate progress as we're as we're moving through the year. So again, the Fox Hybrid while in distance learning, this was, this was something new that we kind of. Kind of one of the new pieces that we that we learned today. Figured out today, I suppose, Fox Hybrid while in distance learning. So at least the first nine weeks. And I think this is one of the big questions that's kind of kept coming up is, is if I choose Fox Hybrid and we begin the first nine weeks online, what exactly does that look like? The schedule, like I said, will reflect the online schedule. On Monday, and this is as as we as we see this at this point right now, and this is what we expect to the district to. To adopt here. On Monday, students will have engagement instructional learning activities pushed out by teachers through their online model. They will log on. They will see what those activities look like. Teachers will have office hours at some point during that day. It will be consistent office hours during that day. And students will have an opportunity to log in, have conversations with teachers that are relative to these engagement instructional and learning activities. Some of those could be readings. Some of those could be videos. Some of those could be activities that they are doing that are relative to the instructional goals of of that particular week or for the course. On Tuesday, there would be a first period and and one of the things that I haven't gotten to at this point yet. For first semester, we would build an, we would build an eight-period schedule for the year. First semester would be first period, third period, fifth period, and seventh period. Second semester would then be second period, fourth period, sixth period, eighth period, and you'll see that here in just a moment when when we pull up the schedules. On Tuesdays, first period would have a live synchronous meet opportunity for students. Again, we want this to be flexible for all of our students and we understand that not all students are gonna have an opportunity to meet during that live synchronous meeting. If they are not, the meeting will be recorded. Students will be able to go in and watch that meeting a little bit later to get what that live instruction was during that time. For other classes and even for the first period class, there will also be engagement instructional learning activities that are gonna be pushed out by the teachers. So that that the the instructional activities and the instructional minutes for each of those classes is actually met for that day. On Wednesday, teachers would have an opportunity or students will have an opportunity to have a live synchronous meets, a meeting with their third-period classes. And then again, engagement instructional learning activities for other classes pushed out. Thursday would be for fifth period for the live synchronous media opportunity and Friday would be the the seventh period live synchronous meeting opportunity. This follows the state guidance, which essentially states that. Students need at least one opportunity today, a day to have a live synchronous opportunity to meet with their class or classes and teachers. And still have other learning and engagement opportunities that are pushed out by other classes. On a daily basis. And so this would actually reflect five days of instruction for students through this model right here. And yet still every single student having at least one opportunity to meet face-to-face with live instruction every week with their teachers. So now, when it's safe to return to in-person learning, what this would look like is we would go back to that original. The original model that that you would have seen a couple of weeks ago that was sent out by the district of Mondays being. Teacher prep day, but also still pushing out instructional activities for students. Tuesdays being a cohort A day, Wednesdays being a cohort B day, Thursdays being a cohort A day, Fridays being a cohort B day. So what that would reflect there is two, it says two plus days here. There are certain exceptions or certain groups of students that might need more than two days. And we would find ways to get those students on campus for more than two days of in-person learning, but it would be two, roughly two days of in-person learning per week. It would be a continuation of the Edge Annuity plus the Silverfall School District curriculum. It would be live instruction, collaboration, and feedback, and it would be a continuation of the social emotional learning that they would be getting during their their. Distance learning as well. The importance of or the value of making sure that we are continuing the Edge Annuity curriculum once we get back live and in person. Is that if it comes to a point where we would have to shut down again, if for whatever reason we go above the metrics and we have to shut down again. It can easily transition from the hybrid model back into the distance learning model and vice versa. So it's it's a, it's an easy in and outs and and fluid continuation of the same curriculum. Fox Online. If you are on the Fox Online path, all online learning would continue as was previously stated. And you can continue and and count on that to be a consistent delivery of that instruction or that that model for the entire year. The 2021 school year, the schedule, we are looking at running a four-by-four block and what that means, and it's gonna look a little bit different. And and I'll explain kind of how that looks once I get through explaining what a four-by-four block looks like. And as opposed to. A traditional year-long course or semester-long course, we would end up go breaking our school year into four nine-week quarters. In each of those nine-week quarters, students would be taking four classes. The instruction over a year-long course would essentially be condensed down to 18 weeks. A semester, a traditional semester that we know is a traditional semester, 18 weeks. Would be condensed down into a nine-week period. So if you have a full year-long class or what we've traditionally called a full year-long class. That will actually be condensed down into 18 weeks. Or into two nine-week quarters. Traditional semester-long courses will be condensed down into one nine-week quarter. However, the instructional minutes during those quarters will be increased in order to provide full instruction for that course. So the students will be able to get the same amount of content. The teachers will be able to get the same amount of content in over a nine-week. Or semester-long or an 18-week or year-long course. And we would then be. Awarding credits at the quarters as opposed to at the semester. I'll explain more of that here in just a moment. What we would look like in our first, second, third, and fourth quarters, first quarter would be periods one, three, five, and seven. Seventh period will be AG and will even continue online when we return in person. You'll see more about that when we get to the daily schedule on a hybrid model. The second quarter would be periods one, three, five, and seven. The period seven would continue to be AG and would continue to be online even when we return in person. Third quarter would be periods two, four, six, and eight, and period eight would continue to be an online course when we return in person. Fourth quarter would be periods two, four, six, and eight, and again, period eight would continue online when we return in person. All of this is still subject to, you know, against state guidance. If for whatever re, for whatever reason, state guidance comes back and in March, April, or May and says, we're good to have all of our students back in school. Some of this could could be subject to change. We would give you plenty of lead time on all of that to know exactly what that looks like. And I think it's also important to know that we don't expect you to absorb all of this right now and fully understand exactly what this looks like. We expect there to be questions. It takes time for this stuff to sink in. Once we get to the point where where we've answered those questions, I think there'll come a point where people will begin to absorb it and this will make a lot more sense. And and you'll be able to make yourselves and students very comfortable and very successful with this. The reason that we decided to go with four classes as opposed to seven is we just feel it's gonna be easier for students, parents, and teachers to manage four periods over. A week or a day than it would be to to manage seven. We feel like it'll be a lot more effective and at the end of the day, we will still be offering as many credits at the end of the year in this model as we would be in our traditional model. So. So that's a, that's a, that's a big plus. Credits in a typical year, a student could earn up to seven and a half credits. That is typically reflected in 3.75 credits per semester. If they're taking seven classes over a semester and each of those classes is half a credit. That would be three and a half credits. AG is 0.25 credits at the end of semester. That would equal out to be 3.75 credits. Those credits are awarded a semester. Over two semesters, it would be seven and a half credits. In a COVID year like this year, hopefully, this will be the only one we have to deal with. Students could also earn up to seven and a half credits. They would earn either one and a half or two credits per quarter depending on when they are taking AG. And then credits are awarded at the quarter. So AG is 0.25 per quarter. Electives or core classes are 0.5 per quarter. So. If you are taking four classes and AG in your quarter, I'm sorry, three classes and your AG in first, in your first quarter, you will earn. 1.5. Five credits in the quarter, 1.75 credits in the quarter. So that's, that's kind of how that would look. It just depends on what your. What what the class is that you are taking, whether it's AG or whether it's a core class or whether it's an elective. Where you would get 0.5 credits during that quarter for for one of those classes versus 0.25 per quarter for AG. I hope that makes sense. If there's questions about that, please feel free to ask them. First semester hybrid class schedule, this is in draft form at this point, but we believe it's gonna be pretty close to what we end up with. When, and again, this is when we come back in the hybrid model. When we are in the distance learning model, it's gonna look a little bit different. Remember, we're only gonna be live synchronous for one class per day and then things are gonna be pushed out from other classes on a day via via online. But when we come back into a hybrid class schedule, we will look at starting at 7:55. 7:55 to 9:20, we talked about increasing the instructional minutes to be able to make sure that we're hitting those instructional minutes so we can condense the. The class down into a semester or a quarter. So first period, we're looking at at 85-minute periods, 7:55 to 9:20. We'd have a 10-minute passing period from 9:40 to 10:45. We'd have third period. We'd have another 10, 10-minute passing period from 11:05 to 12:30. We'd be doing fifth period. And then at 12:30, students would be picking up their lunches and they would actually be. Excused from campus at that point right there. If students have lunches coming the next day or if they have breakfast coming the next day, that will also be provided for them at that time. At that point, staff will also have their lunch and then they will go into their their office hours. Students then will begin their online class at 1 o'clock. 1 to 2:20 are are the hours. Of that particular class and staff will be available to those students online at that point. During the first semester, that will be the AG class and that will be going through social emotional. Learning for for freshmen and sophomores. And it would probably be college and career readiness courses for our juniors and seniors at that time. But that will be our typical AG prep. Edge Annuity does offer those courses and so the students can walk, it can be walked through real easily with guidance from the teachers that will be available online at that point. And then the end of the day for our teachers would be from 2:25 to 3:05 would be their prep period and there'll be a common prep for our teachers at that time. would be their prep period and there'll be a common prep for our teachers at that time. So that's kind of a, a quick overview of, of what our day, what our semester, what our year would look like, kind of how the credits would be earned. And at this point right now, I would like to, oops, let's see what we got. At this point right now, I would like to kind of open it up to some questions that parents might have. What I want to do first is, is I've got a, a list of some questions right here that were pre-submitted. And I want to go over some of those and I appreciate people sending these in early so we can have an opportunity to, to ask them. I'm sorry, to ask them out here and, and answer them. Before I get going on any of that, Mr. Rice and Mrs. Pharaoh, is there anything that you'd like to add to what, what was just presented there? By the way, this is Mr. Rice and Mrs. Pharaoh that are also online with us. They're going to help us answer questions. I didn't introduce myself to begin with, for those of us that, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Wade Lock and I'm the principal of Silverton High School. My apologies. So first question we've got is how will tag students be supported during the first part of the year, which is online? Mrs. Pharaoh, do you want to address that?
Yeah, we're really thankful that our tag coordinator, who was on a leave of absence last year, Sheila Nielsen will be joining us again and this time full-time. So we are looking forward to Ms. Nielsen reaching out to students who receive tag services and then developing individualized plans to support their needs. What I can assure you is that we will have tag support all year. It won't just be specific to an individual credit. So we're thankful to have her back and know that your students will be in good hands.
Thank you, Mrs. Pharaoh. Next question, can clubs get together on school property or off school property while maintaining distancing and mask guidelines? Mr. Rice is our, is our athletic director and assistant principal. And I think he's, he's been in touch with the OSAA and some of the guidelines that are relative to that. So if you can answer that.
Yes, for sure. So first of all, I think it's important to remember whether we're talking on the athletic side or the activity side. We have our beliefs and our wants and our hopes for Silverton High School and our district. Then we also report to our, our league, which is the Mid-Willemette Conference. And then obviously everything from there falls under OSAA. So what I can tell you is, is we've already had conversations at the league level as well as the OSAA level to try to outline what will be a unified vision for our activities and athletics. What's really important for us here in Silver Falls is to give our kids as many engagement opportunities as we can. And so when and if it is safe for us to meet both on the athletic front and activity front, we will do, do, do that. So if a club can meet virtually, we will do whatever we can to support that. If OSAA and our league both support that as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Question up, will students be registered for hybrid classes by default? And that's a clarified question saying, if I didn't make a choice last week or I didn't send in a request last week, is my student going to be registered for the hybrid classes by default? The answer to that is yes. You had to make a request or if, if you'd still like to, you still could make a request for an online, for, for the Fox Online if that was something that you wanted. That is something that you would like or an option, like we would ask you to get that in ASAP because we're going to be staffing that very soon. And, and we'll probably need to know by absolutely no later than the end of this week in order to do that. The next question, with hybrid class, a student can still set their own hours of study or does the student have structured times? He or she needs to be online with teachers in class. So there's going to be opportunities, live synchronous opportunities for students to engage with their teachers. But again, this is built to be flexible. The whole, the whole schedule is built to be flexible. We understand when students are home in a distance learning situation, that they may not always be available to meet with the class at the time the class is meeting. And so those live synchronous opportunities where a teacher might be giving direct instruction, that will be recorded, the teacher or I'm sorry, the student will then have an opportunity to go back and watch that, that instruction. If there are questions that the student has relative to that instruction, the teacher will have office hours every day to be able to answer those questions for those students. So so the expectation doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily the student is going to be there. It would certainly be helpful if the student is able to be at those live synchronous instructional periods, but if they're not able to, this schedule is built or this model is built to be able to, to compensate for that. So so I hope that answers that question. When will we know what classes students will have in the first nine weeks? Is this could make a difference in, in what option? That will be at registration. There should be some information coming out about registration soon. We do plan to do at this point right now, and I, and I don't anticipate there being a change in this at this point. But at this point right now, we plan to have a drive-through registration. It'll be laid out in a very detailed letter that you should be getting shortly. I would suggest sometime in the next week, week and a half, by the end of next week perhaps, that will be laid out very, very detailed and very structured as far as the drive-through is concerned. It's going to be an exten-, over an extended period of time. So a three or four-day registration process where hopefully if we can spread it out far enough and, and have specific times that people are coming in, that, that we'll be able to do that nice and smoothly. That will be when students will be able to pick up their schedules. If you're not able to make it into the registration at that time, we can, we can either mail schedules out to you or you can make an arrangement to come in and pick one up, pick your schedule up. How is the online model going to look and when do kids get their schedules? I hope I just answered both of those questions actually. And, and the online model in the presentation. Is, is the high school going to have soccer this year? I, I think Coach Rice answered that question already. But that's going to be based on OSAA and, and state metrics as to whether or not we are able to reopen. But again, that's going to be, it's going to be dependent on safety. If we are able to have soccer safely, OSAA and the state metrics will be able to measure that and we want it. We want soccer this year. I'll tell you that. Along with every other activity we offer, we want those things. We think those are very important opportunities for our students to stay engaged as a student, stay engaged socially with their peers. And we think those are healthy activities. So, so we want it as badly as everybody else does. Hopefully we're going to be able to make that happen. Let's see. If a student or family member has an emergent health issue, can they switch from Fox Hybrid to Fox Online in the middle of the term? All of that stuff is going to be quite, any sort of switch from one section to the other is going to be on an individual basis. We're going to evaluate kind of what the situations are. I would definitely suggest that if, that if a student has a health issue, that is something that we would take very seriously. We want to make sure that all of our students can be A, healthy and B, successful in whatever model they choose. And so if there are requests for students to switch from one to the other, we'll take those on an individual basis. But again, it's going to be based on safety, health and, and whether or not the students can be successful in the schedule that they're in. So so I hope that answers that question. How will attendance policies be affected by distance learning? We are going to be held to an attendant standard. Johnny, do you know the exact wording on the guidance on that one?
As far as I understand at this point, that it's a, some sort of check-in every day and that check-in might be through live synchronous instruction. It might be via an email, a phone call, turning in assignments. So there's lots of different ways that we can count attendance in a comprehensive distance learning model. And then we've, as a district, have really started discussions around it. What point will we start getting concerned and, and what are the, the metrics for, for lack of participation or attendance in which we're going to start reaching out with additional interventions? So we know that kids, when they're at school and engaged, are more likely to graduate high school. And so that's something we're going to be tracking very closely.
Thank you. And I don't know if you've got those questions in front of you, Mrs. Pharaoh, but the next one is relative to AP classes. Will AP classes be taught over two semesters or one? If just one, will that semester be fall, in which case they will finish four months before the AP exams in May or spring, in which case they won't finish the class before the exam? We do have a plan for this. Mrs. Pharaoh, I'm going to let you go ahead and answer that one as well.
Yeah, unfortunately, classes like AP and accelerated courses in a crisis situation aren't always the best scenario. We are building a schedule so that all of our AP classes take place in the first two quarters so that they're done prior to the testing dates that College Board has put out. What I can tell you in terms of reassuring you is that I think College Board did an excellent job last year in terms of pushing out study information. And I believe our AP teachers did an excellent job as well trying to keep students engaged with the learning that they needed to do to be successful in those exams. And I don't anticipate that that's going to look different. And so it may be some study sessions that are outside of the regular, regular school day that we have. But there's going to be lots of ways that we're working to prepare students to be successful in those end-of-class exams. And again, I anticipate that the College Board's going to provide us with resources and accommodations as well based on, on what this virus does in the next several months.
Thank you. Next question, can hybrid students take Edge Annuity-only classes? So, so both our, our Fox Hybrid and Fox Online classes are going to be anchored in Edge Annuity. So so, so I suppose the, the answer to that is, is yes, they are Edge Annuity classes. If, if you want to follow the Edge Annuity curriculum specifically without any Silverton High School teacher supplements that might be added into that, then the Fox Online would be, would be the option there.
The other way I think you could take that question is can I access classes that aren't offered in the Silverton High School Curriculum Guide? And that maybe you've seen some in there that interest you or your student and, and you're wanting to access those. Because it's still our teachers that are, that are teaching that curriculum, it's not going to be possible for us to expand outside of our current curriculum guide. But we have kids oftentimes that want to take classes outside of the Silverton High School curriculum. And, and we have lots of partners that we've worked with and we can steer you in the right direction to find a supplemental course if you're interested in that. Most often, we work with BYU Independent Study. Kids will go to the local community college, take a class there, transferring credit. There's lots of different ways. If there's something that piques your curiosity, that we can help you maybe find a different way, but is it just signing up for an Edge Annuity course? No, because that requires a teacher to run it, assess it and put all the time that goes into making sure that student is progressing and, and making academic growth.
Thank you. Number 15, Edge Annuity classes appear to be in a semester format. Is that accurate or will, will they be adapted for quarterly? We, we purchased this, this curriculum to be able to use kind of at our pace. And so we will be able to, to make that adapt for, for our needs and, and how we are formatting this model right here. So we're going to be able to make that work. How many classes will students take each semester? Or is it by quarter? So year-long courses will be now semester-long courses. We anticipate students to be taking four classes in a semester. If a class is a traditional semester-long course, then at the nine-week point, they will be finished with that class and they would start a different nine-week course at that point. So so it just depends on, on the, the, the traditional length of the class as to whether it will be a, a quarter-long class, nine-week quarter-long class or an 18-week semester-long class. The, the real basic simple math of it, if it is traditionally a year-long course, it will now be a semester-long course. If it is traditionally a semester-long course, it will now be a nine-week course. The credits awarded will be the same. So I hope, I hope that made sense. How many weeks is each term? There'll be nine weeks in each term. The question that's come up a few times, can Fox Online students take Edge Annuity classes that are not offered at SHS? The answer is that students that are in the Fox Online class are going to be limited to the electives that are being offered in the Fox Online program. So I suppose the short answer to that is, is no. And, and I, and I suppose if that's something that needs to be challenged or something that, that somebody wants to have a conversation about, we're open to that conversation as far as exceptions, but the general rule to that is going to be no. If you are taking Fox Online, you're going to be limited to the, the really limited number of electives that we're going to be offering in that, in that track.
Hand on that a little?
Yeah, please.
And I think our, our vision in this is still very preliminary, but because we'll have a finite number of staff members allocated to the Fox Online, what we are really anticipating is a schedule that focuses on core content and required classes. And so it may mean that you take, your student might take some classes out of sequence from their peers so that they can open up the full breadth of the electives that we offer when they return back to school. And, and so it's, you know, we're held to licensing requirements at the high school level. And so in order to issue a credit towards an, an Oregon diploma, we have to stay within those bounds of having a highly qualified instructor in each of those core content areas, which limits what electives we'll be able to offer in Fox Online.
Thank you. Going to go to some of the questions that are just being answered right now or being asked at this point right now. Is Fox Online at the faster pace like Fox Hybrid? Both of these classes or, or both of these tracks are going to go at the same pace. So what, again, what was typically a year-long course will be a semester-long course. But again, the instructional minutes are going to be expanded on a daily basis to be able to make sure that it's not necessarily at a faster pace. It's just going to be done in a, in a shorter condensed period of time. Students are going to have half the number of classes that they typically have, but those classes are going to increase as far as instructional minutes are concerned. So I, I hope that answers that question. There was another question that was there that just disappeared. So I'm sorry, Katie, I missed that, the second one there. The next question, a school district in Georgia that opened this month has had to quarantine over 1,000 students at 10 schools. Assuming we go back to school in November, how will continuing education be handled for students who have to stay home to quarantine? Will they switch to the Fox Online system until they go back to school? So though we are, I think that's a good question that I'm not going to be able to give you a perfect answer for at this point right now. And I apologize, that's going to be one we're going to float to the district because if we get to a point where we are reopening and then we have to close, there, there is, there's going to be a pretty short leash on us closing if something happens within the school. I, I don't think it's necessarily at this point a, a full given that though we have committed at this point to the first nine weeks of distance learning, if our county and our state don't hit the metrics really by the middle of October, then we're very likely going to make another nine-week commitment at that point right then to finish out the semester in distance learning as well. At this point, coming back in November is really banking on the metrics that the state has, has put out, being hit by our counties and our state. Again, safety is going to be the number one concern for our students, for our staff. And we want to make sure that, that we're doing everything we can to keep people safe and healthy. So I'm hoping that I can answer that question a little bit better. Later on, we have an opportunity to say, you know, if a student's in the hybrid model, they need to quarantine. Are they switching over into the online model? I think that's a, it's an excellent question and one that actually I don't think we've had come up yet. So we will, we will discuss that as a team, float that to the district and we'll get a better answer for you as soon as we can. Do we know what the SAT and ACT tests will look like this year?
I'll take that one.
The short answer I think is no, but Johnny, go ahead. I'll let you take that one.
Yeah, I've been asking that question a lot the last couple of weeks as we start looking at our, our schedule for the fall. Typically, we have the opportunity to offer the SAT at the high school in mid-October and we, we do it the same day as the, the PSAT. And the College Board has relaxed a little bit in terms of what proctoring of tests could look like. And so they've said I can split our students between two days to make smaller cohorts. What I don't What I don't think we've mapped out yet is if that meets the metric. So in the newest guidance, it says that certain populations of students can come in in pockets of 10 for up to two hours. Well, if you've ever taken the SAT, you know it takes longer than two hours. And so I know that that's a discussion that our cabinet is having this week and we'll continue to watch the state guidance. My other advice is just to closely follow College Board and ACT announcements and their other testing sites. While we may not be able to offer it and, and, and we're going to explore that and do everything we can to. If it comes back that we can't, hopefully there are other test sites that will be available. And so just keep watching closely and then really be watching what your students intended colleges and universities are asking for. Admissions look very different in the era of COVID. And many of them are weighing things more heavily like the essays that kids are turning in. And I've heard some discussions about maybe pushing back earlier application dates to try and get more grades on the transcript in lieu of an ACT or an SAT. And so it's really important that your students are working with Mr. Ortega if they're a senior. And then their college is that they're intending on going to, to see if that's even going to be a requirement. But we're going to do everything we can do to provide that opportunity at Silverton High School and give the best advice in terms of applying to colleges and universities.
Thank you. If a teacher gets sick, will, will you be using subs? When we get back into the, to the, the hybrid model, and I think this is a really good question, the, the answer to that is yes, there will be subs available. If, if a teacher is either, either sick or has other responsibilities or other things that they need to take care of, there will be subs available. That will be limited how they're vetted and, and who is coming into the building is going to be very, it's going to be very limited. But yes, we have, we have, have that, that conversation direction that, that subs will be available in the case that teachers are not available for those days. But we'll make sure that it's, it's as safe as we can possibly make it. Is extra tutoring, tutoring available for, for kids? Yes, there will be as many opportunities as we can possibly give students. Extended opportunities, flexible opportunities, multiple opportunities for students to meet the standards that they need to meet and, and guided by their teachers. There's going to be office hours every day by teachers and, and available to students. So there's going to be a lot of extra support that's needed. If for whatever reason your student is not getting all the support that they need, it's really, we would ask you to please let us know, get in touch with us so that we can start to make the adjustments to make sure that your student is getting all of the supports that they need in order to be successful. That's, that's really the big goal here is multiple flexible opportunities for students to be successful. Can kids work more self paced with the online option? In case they have a job, will they be required to attend synchronistic classes more than once a day? Again, this is, this is designed in order for it to be as flexible as possible for students and families. We understand that if a student has a job, that they will not be able to make it to every synchronous opportunity. That class will be recorded or that synchronous learning opportunity will be recorded. The instruction will be recorded for the student that can then go back. You know, maybe that, that synchronous instructional activity will take place at nine o'clock in the morning. And the student might be at work at that point, doesn't have an opportunity until six o'clock in the evening to watch that. At which point the student can maybe watch that, type some questions or comments into a chat board. And the, the teacher can then respond to that later or even possibly get into some office hour discussions with the student a little bit later on in the week as well. So again, designed to be as flexible as possible to work around schedules. We understand that these are, these are unique times, that schedules are going to be difficult to balance and we're doing everything we can to make sure that we put a model together that works with families, that works with students, unique schedules. So, so the answer is yes, that there will be self pacing opportunities for those students. Seems like Fox Online kids are getting less educational opportunity than hybrid cohorts. If a Silverton High School class can be online, why not offer it? Why make the online a lesser educational opportunity? So I, I really, this is a different style of learning. I wouldn't necessarily call it less of an educational, either one of them, less of an educational opportunity. I think both of these offer a, a real high quality opportunity for students to get a very strong and outstanding learning experience. The in-person experience tends to be a little bit more of a, of a social atmosphere when it comes to that hybrid model where people want their students back in school. They want that social interaction. There are some students, there are some parents, some families that prefer, you know, the, the, that online model where students can kind of self pace it and, and get it in, in different chunks. But, but the content, the instruction really just looks a little bit different in the delivery. So I wouldn't necessarily say that one is better or worse than the other. It's just a different style of learning. One of the, one of the questions that's kind of come up a few times is, is the AP classes or the college credit classes. If you were to take a college credit course right now, or if you're taking a college course right now, you could take a college course completely online 100%. It's already done in this model right now. And I, I would consider that a very high quality course and high quality instruction that's given. The feedback is very timely. We are going to be committing to very timely feedback for our students and making sure that, that they get a really strong educational experience, do whichever model they decide to choose.
Yeah, I think the other factor included in that is that we're just limited to what we can really ask our staff to do and be successful with. We, we have incredible teachers at Silverton High School and they're going to take care of your kids and give them a really great educational experience. And we have to be realistic about what, what we can actually ask a teacher in this type of environment to turn around and produce. And so we, we really believe strongly that it's, it's not equitable for our staff to have to try and manage online classrooms with full time students and the hybrid model with full time students. And so we have to set our staff up to be successful so they can deliver the highest quality instruction possible and still maintain their own wellbeing.
Absolutely, thank you. In the past, freshman students would start one day ahead of the rest of the high school. Will all high school students start together this year? To be determined. Right now, that's going to be a to be determined. We're still working on schedules at this point right now. All of this is a work in progress. That question has been brought up, though it's, it's been a week or so since we've had that discussion. So I appreciate you bringing that back and putting it back on the radar. Unfortunately, I just can't give you an answer to that question right now. We will have a response to that shortly and get that one back out to you. I understand schools are allowed to open CTE classes for in-person teaching during online school. Will S H S offer in-person welding and shop this fall? These are conversations that we have had. And as long as the guidance is allowing for, for in-person instruction, then we will seek to find ways that we can safely bring our students in to make sure they're getting that, that personal instruction. But again, that's going to be dependent upon the guidance. We'll take a close look at that and make sure that, that, that what we are doing in the, in the offers that, I'm sorry, the courses that we are offering in person to our students are consistent with that guidance. Johnny, do you have anything to add as far as that one is concerned? I know you've had some conversations about this.
Turn my mic on. I would just say we sure hope so. And we just got that guidance yesterday. And so we're going to be looking at every possible opportunity we can to get students in and engaging with manipulatives and a lab space environment. And, and we know just the value of our fine arts programs and our CTE programs and all of our electives. And so if, if we have a chance, we're sure going to try. Can I say for sure? No. So hopefully to be continued.
Thank you.
And I can probably talk about this next one if you want to.
In high, I'm going to, I'll read the question, then I'll let you take it. In hybrid, students will do one hour 25 minutes per subject per week. And for a full credit, this will be over 18 weeks. In regular time, students would do approximately one hour a day for five days a week for each subject and for a full year. How do these times equate? Go ahead, Johnny.
Sure. I think we really have to start looking at what we think of as instruction differently. You know, I can give you the example of, of my own online classes that I'm taking right now in college. I, you know, in a traditional college class, when I was at Oregon State, I would go in and I would have lecture three days a week and, and I'd have an in-person lab. Today, my classes look much more like I have a module posted every week. I have a touch in with that instructor maybe for an hour or two, and then I have independent work time. And if I was a younger student, then that would be with, in coordination with my learning coach. And that that's really the, the switch is that there are lots of different modalities in which we can instruct kids beyond just a teacher in front of students delivering information. And so it's, it's really a difference of what does instruction look like? And how does my student gather that information and translate it into learning? And so I just, I, I know it's just not how school is, is in our, in our heads. It is, it is different than what we've had in the past. And, and we really have to start that kind of paradigm shift of, of what does instruction look like through this model.
This is going to change a lot of the things that, a lot of the ways that we operate as we go through this. But I think that's, that's a great response. So thank you. For the hybrid model, why is it every other day? It seems like that is an exposure risk as one week in person, one week at home being considered. The district made this call a couple of weeks ago and, and is consistent with the entire district. At this point right now, we are moving forward in the model that we are in at this point. So it is going to be A day, B day, A day, B day. So I suppose the, the short answer to that is in order to stay consistent with where the district landed on this, that one week in person and one week at home at this point right now is not being discussed.
Well, and, and I think the big concern was what happens when we're completely disengaged from our students for seven days? And so that every other day really was so that we can be tracking and monitoring and catching when we see something that's not working, especially for the younger kids in our school district who are in early literacy and, in some of those other areas. And so that was really the goal was to not extend the amount of time that we weren't able to have that synchronous engagement with students once we are back in, in live instruction.
And then the final question we've got here, which actually takes us right about to the, the, the end of our time as well, is can, can kids get high school credit for working? I suppose the real simple answer to that is yes, we do offer work experience credit for our students. There needs to be a, a process that they go through with their counselor. And there's got to be some documentation as far as all of that is concerned. But there is a process, process that they can go through. There's a certain number of hours that they will need to have documented from their employer and what their responsibilities are, at which point we can take that and we can give them work experience credit for that time. So that looks to be the last question that we've got here. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to have a conversation with you. Like I said, this is going to be the first of, of weekly conversations. We're going to keep putting these on Wednesdays at six o'clock. We'll commit an hour a week to answering questions as best we can. Again, there's going to be more things that are going to come up daily. Every single day, we're going to learn something new. Things are going to evolve a little bit. And, and every week we expect to have more answers for you on a lot of the questions that you're ans, I'm sorry, you're asking right now. We do encourage you to continue sending them in. You can email them to me specifically if you would like. We can then add them to this list. When you email me, I'll try and respond back as quickly as I possibly can. We know this is a difficult situation. But again, I think it's a great opportunity to teach our kids a great lesson about just overcoming adversity and, and forging forward. Adaptability and, and making sure that our students are learning the right lessons from us and keeping a positive attitude and moving forward. We're in this one together and, and we're going to get through this. It's going to be a great year. And I sincerely believe we're going to be able to give our students a, a great educational experience. So again, thank you all, Mr. Rice and Mrs. Farrow. I appreciate you being here to help us answer questions. And again, if you, if you need anything, we're a phone call or an email away. Take care of yourselves. We'll see you soon.